Good afternoon, everyone. We're starting the meeting just a little bit late today. It's 4:03. Apologize to anybody that's been waiting for a 4 o'clock start time. This is Salina City Commission Meeting, September 17th. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would all those in favor please join, rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the Citizens Forum. Time for any citizen to come forward that has any comments or concerns that they would like to address for the City Commission. We do ask that you state your name and your address when you come forward. So if there's any citizens that want to comment on something not on today's agenda, please feel free to do so now. City members, today we have no awards and proclamations, nor do we have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we move into consent agenda.
Item 6.1, through the minutes of September 10th, 2012. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 12-6934, authorizing a rental agreement with Salina Regional Health Center for the lease of a building located at 708 Johnstown Avenue. Item 6.3, authorize repair of high service pump number 205 at the water treatment plant project number 12-2937 to Douglas Pump Service Incorporated in the amount of $28,446. Item 6.4, acceptance of temporary public drainage easement dedication on Lot 2, Block 1 and the Southern Line addition.
Does the Commissioner have any questions or an item that they would like pulled from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions on item 6.2.
Would you like it pulled or just ask the questions?
Uh, probably pull it.
Okay. Any other items to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 6.2?
Sub moving.
Second?
Motion second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number 6.2. All those in favor? All right, those opposed? Now we move into item 6.2.
I just had a couple of questions from Mr. Bankston on this, and I hate to call him out. I'm just a little bit uncomfortable, and I think probably what highlighted it for me is we have two items on the agenda today involving the city and the hospital, and Clark Mize represents both the city and the hospital. And in one of those items, Clark Mize is still representing us on it. On the other, Clark Mize determined there was a conflict sufficient enough to hire outside counsel. So I'm trying to guess, ask Greg if he can address that or why his firm determined that there's a difference between the two items, why one sought a waiver of the conflict of interest and why the other outside counsel is brought in.
Certainly, Commissioner, and it has to do with the nature of the two matters and I think the significant distinctions between the two. The matter of the leasing of this facility on a short-term basis on what would seem to be a matter that did not appear to have any prospects for adversarial circumstances, certainly at least at this point in the process. In terms of the other matter that you have before you where you are in that, in a quasi-judicial role as you consider the amendment of the conditional use permit, the nature of that matter, the fact that it is quasi-judicial in nature, that it involves an element of advocacy on part of the hospital, and the prospect that either party is certainly in a position to appeal that determination to the district court if any of the parties, that is the remedy, if either of any of the parties, interested parties, are not satisfied with the outcome of your decision on the conditional use permit. That is the circumstance that prompted us to believe that that was at a level that warranted our not being involved on behalf of either party. So this conditional use permit.
Who, tell me, did you negotiate the contract for us on the lease?
Um.
Or who negotiated the contract on behalf of the city?
The negotiations, I think it's fair to say, I didn't look to see if Chief Mulligan is here, but there's, the discussions with regard to, I guess, what you would call true negotiation of the contract was a matter between Chief Mulligan and Jack Hennecamp on behalf of Salina Regional Health Center, so.
That's what I was getting at. I was hoping you were going to say, no, it wasn't Mize and I in our office trying to hammer up.
No, not at all. It was, and these gentlemen can describe that more completely because we were simply in a, I read the lease and that was the extent of our involvement.
Thanks.
Any other questions on 6.2? Accept a motion on item 6.2?
I'm with, we adopt a resolution 12-6934, a resolution authorizing a rental agreement with Salina Regional Health Center for the lease of a building located at 708 Johnstown Avenue.
Moving.
Motion second to approve Resolution Number 12-6934. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion carries, five zero. We move to development business.
Item 7.1, consider an appeal of application CU-03-2B requesting an amendment of the original conditional use permit approved for the hospice center denied by the planning commission on April 7th to meet 2012.
Speaking of conflicts, Mayor, I've had a conflict develop on this matter since the last time we heard it, so I'm going to recuse and step down.
Is the football in this one carried by Mr. Andrews? Come on up, please.
This is a consideration of appeal filed by Mr. Jack Hennecamp on behalf of the Salina Regional Health Center of the planning commission's original decision, which occurred on April 17th, 2012, to not approve the Salina Regional Health Center's request to amend the original conditional use permit approved for hospice back in 2003. And I think I would preface our report by three things that might help zero in the consideration and discussion on this. One is, at the time of the original 2003 conditional use permit, the Salina Regional Health Center did not have any involvement in the original construction or design or financing or any involvement in that application itself that was handled by the Hospice of Salina Board. So it was a situation where there was an ownership status change and the Salina Regional Health Center became the owner of the assets of Hospice of Salina. So some of these original provisions and all relating to the original approval were somewhat new to the hospital and they had to catch up and get up to speed. The other thing was that this application for having hospital, clinic and related spaces in this location in our zoning district could have been applied for in 2003, but it wasn't. The specific application was for exclusively a hospice facility, which is characterized more as a residential-type facility like a rest home or nursing home. So in order to introduce these hospital-related clinical and office uses in addition to the hospice space, the planning staff concluded that an amendment of the original conditional use permit was required. The third thing I would note, in some of the discussions in front of the planning commission and carried in the Salina Journal, there was discussion about this serving as a precedent or opening the door to other commercial zoning and uses, and want to clarify that this is not a request for a zoning change. It is a request to add a specific use in this facility and the underlying zoning would not change. And Mr. Luckman can elaborate on that, but he advised the planning commission that this is not necessarily a precedent-setting action as far as opening the door to commercial uses because it is not changing the zoning or the underlying zoning in any way. So John, I'm going to ask you to go to that colorized version of the original hospice floor plan. This is what the planning commission and city commission reviewed in 2003, and it is relatively unchanged since that time. And the green area represents two wings that contain 12 residential units for hospice patients and their families. And so these are residential wings, and today this is office space for hospice administrative staff. John, I'm going to ask you to jump to the floor plan submitted by the Salina Regional Health Center. This is basically the same footprint or floor plan. The plan is to leave this intact as a six-bed wing for hospice, and this over here would be converted from a six-bed residential wing to the administrative office space for hospice. And then there would be a division here, and this east wing or northeast wing here would be office space for Veridian Behavioral Health. And I believe we also have a basement floor plan. So this is a little harder to see, but the basement area today is storage and open space, and this proposal would put an additional office and clinical space in the basement area. So that is the primary nature of the change. There's no proposal to change the footprint or outside appearance, but it's essentially an intensification of the use inside the existing building. And you conducted a hearing on the hospital's appeal on May 21st, and after the conclusion of that hearing, you elected to send this item back to the planning commission for reconsideration. And much of that was because there was quite a bit more information and evidence presented to the city commission at your May 21st appeal hearing than what had been presented to the planning commission originally. You also asked the planning commission to look at whether there were additional conditions or limitations that could make this facility more compatible. So following that remand back to the planning commission, representatives of the hospital and neighboring property owners agreed to enter into additional dialogue and discussions to determine whether they could come closer to finding a common ground in their positions. And so a summary of those points of agreement are found on page 10 of your report, and Dana and Virginia Morse are the owners of the only residential existing property on Holly Lane that is occupied. And they withdrew their objections to Veridian Behavioral Health being placed in the facility and to any of the physical modifications that needed to be made to accommodate them, including the construction of parking and the changes to the signage that were contemplated. Their withdrawal of their objections were based on three conditions. One, they wanted to see the hours of the facility limited to eight to eight Monday through Friday with no weekends, that they agreed to the maximum facility square footage and the original conditional use permit remaining in place, and then also had concern about the potential for gathering of outdoor smokers as a result of the Veridian Behavioral Health. And the health center agreed to construct a shielded smoking shelter if that became an issue. So there was a time lag between April meetings and your May appeal, and then August 21st when this went back before the planning commission. Two facts that had changed in that interim period was, one, the Morse's had withdrawn their objection, and, two, Todd Welsh, who owned some lots on this side of Holly Lane with some plans for future residential development, dropped those plans, sold the lots to North MacArthur, who owns a property on Victoria Heights and also some properties going through. So essentially what you have is, you have Leonard Knox is the owner of this lot here, North MacArthur owns these two here, the Morse's own four to five, and then North MacArthur owns those lots as well. So the planning commission conducted a full public hearing on this remand, which ran somewhere close to two hours in length, so they did take a lot of information and testimony. And when that hearing concluded, they had a reversed vote from their original vote, and the vote was four to two to reverse their prior decision and to approve the application incorporating the three conditions agreed to between the Morse's and Salina Regional Health Center. And those are outlined on page 11 of your report. So based on the record and the discussions that occurred at those meetings, staff pulled out and summarized the basis of those decisions. And the first one was that they found, based on staff's analysis, that the conditional use permit amendment complied with all the our district zoning requirements, including off-street parking. They concluded that the use in this location would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public, partially on the basis of a report of a sale in Victoria Heights that exceeded the appraised value of the property. They concluded that with the objections withdrawn from Mr. Morse and from Mr. Welsh, and there was no evidence produced of any reduction of property values in Victoria Heights, that is the primary reversal of findings from the planning commission, that they no longer concluded that the change would have a substantial injury to the value of nearby residential property. They concluded that adequate parking would be provided to serve Veridian's use in addition to hospice, that adequate utilities and drainage facilities were in place, and that the existing access drives were adequate. All parties seem to agree that the addition of Veridian here would add 60 to 80 vehicle trips to the very lightly-traveled Holly Lane. There were also reports from the engineering department of 18 accidents on East Crawford out in this stretch here from the bridge over to Victoria Heights. Of those 18, only two were at the Holly Lane intersection, and both of those were rear-end accidents on Crawford and not related to people trying to enter or pull out of the Holly Lane entrance there. We did want to point out to you on page 12 that the planning commission only incorporated three conditions into their action. At your May 21st meeting, in the session you had with Mr. Luckman where you were in closed session, there were a couple other conditions that had been brought forward and actually were carryovers from the previous conditions of the planning commission and city commission in 2003, the most important of which is item one there on page 12. The planning commission has gone back and forth on that, but in their most recent action, they allowed the original 26,000-square-foot limitation to remain in place. The building that's there today is 16,000 square feet, so one option you would have is the city commission, if it would make you feel more comfortable with the decision, would be to limit the facility to the existing footprint, which is 16,000 square feet. That is not part of the planning commission's recommendation. Item two there was a carryover from the original conditional use permit that limited the facility to a single-story plus basement, but did not allow the hospital or anybody else to change the residential design and appearance of the building. Item three there would basically limit the use of the property to the existing site plan and floor plan, and what condition three would say is that there could not be a complete elimination of hospice from the floor plan without notification of neighboring property owners in a hearing and a further amendment of the conditional use permit. Item four was discussed, but not adopted by any commission in any of their motions, and that was the idea of reorienting the primary entrance for Veridian to face the parking lot to the northwest. The hospital is not interested in reorienting the building and would like to maintain the two entrances where they are, which are right here and right here on the south face of the building. So if people are parking in this parking area here, they will come around and enter at this sidewalk location right here, and that will be the main entrance for Veridian Behavioral Health. The fifth possible condition there is predicated, that this action is predicated on continued hospital ownership and use and is not transferable to a non-hospital owner. That would just put everybody on notice and make them feel more secure that the basis for this application is the fact that the hospital is the owner. If it was another private entity that was not a hospital, this would not be allowed as a freestanding clinic. So with those items identified, staff has identified three options that you could take today. One would be to accept the findings and reasoning of the planning commission and concur with their August 21st decision to recommend approval of the requested amendment, subject to the three conditions that they outlined in their action. Option two would be to accept those findings and reasons to support approval of the amendment, subject to any additional conditions that you deem appropriate. And I have outlined those for you on page 12. Those are five conditions that have been discussed in some context that were not part of the planning commission's action. And then the third option would be to deny the request altogether. All or any three of those actions would take three affirmative votes. You do have the option to go into closed session with Mr. Todd Luckman, our legal counsel, to discuss this item as it is a item of quasi-judicial nature, and those could be to help formulate findings or determine what conditions you believe are appropriate. But with that, I'd be open to any questions you have. This is not a public hearing. You may take public comment if you wish, and if you do not wish, you do not have to.
Questions for Mr. Andrew. I've got a few of them for you here. Try to reach a sequential order. The division that you spoke of, I'm familiar with inside the facility and kind of that grand middle area with the kitchen and everything. That won't be part of then the hospice any longer. The hospice is merely that wing that shoots out down at the bottom.
That is what I understand, but Mr. Hennecamp.
And everybody behind you is shaking to look.
Clarified that. It was indicated at the planning commission meeting that this, what's referred to as common area, would still be available as part of the hospice facility, but it's difficult for me to detect. They were also told that there would be a solid wall or barrier between Veridian and the hospice portion, but I'm not detecting that there, so that might be one I would direct to Mr. Hennecamp. But the planning commission was told that this area would be left available to the hospice as a commons area.
That just gives me an understanding of no barriers and where the common overflow between the areas are.
Because this would be hospice space, and this would be hospice space, and this flow would still be there. They would have to help us understand where this barrier is there because we didn't see that when we were working at the plan.
Traffic count, I guess, was my other concern, just because we have a lot of concerns brought out, traffic count, time to time. Not questioning any of the eyes that have looked over this, but I see that basically the hospice will be reduced down to six beds, so six patients, is what they're foreseeing and need for. So it might even be less than that with the support staff. To me, that seems like an awful lot, that seems like a small number compared to the 18 office and meeting rooms that are going to be in the Veridian service area with a lot of frequent trips versus somebody visiting a hospice patient, it might not be that frequent. So my concern is in the Crawford intersection, which where accidents do occur out there, they're pretty major. We had one just at, I think, up the middle the other day from the construction. But it sounds like an awful, it sounds like a huge increase of traffic flow. And I'm not having a problem with that, but what infrastructure and what do we need to do out there? Because a left turn is pretty difficult for a lot of frequent left turns. That's usually when people get impatient, I think Mr. Stack would say, and that is what would lead to my just concern for safe traveling in and out of this facility.
What will certainly increase is the pattern, the frequency of trips in and out, because you're taking a facility that is where primarily people might be there for a full day or an eight-hour period visiting with loved ones, and so the trips in and out are relatively infrequent, whereas with Veridian, you will have scheduled appointments, maybe an hour or half hour, so that the total number of trips per day will increase, and the frequency of those trips in and out will increase because people will be going in and out in shorter periods than what is happening today. But you're taking, you're talking about comparing a street that has almost no traffic today with what that increase would be, and what the arguments that were advanced back in 2003 is that if you had no hospice and you had eight houses on the west side of Holly Lane and 14 houses, or excuse me, eight on the east and 14 on the west, that would generate about 220 trips a day in and out of Holly Lane, and what the hospice essentially done is eliminated the 14 possible residences on the west side of Holly Lane and packaged that into the single facility. So when that was looked at, there is no doubt that the trips in and out on Holly Lane are going to occur much more frequently than they do today because people are going to come and go in half-hour or hour increments, and there will also be an increase in the number of trips generated by Veridian compared to what a full hospice would have.
But still, at the 60 to 80, far less than what the original design or consideration for the property was. for the property was. I guess what I'm saying is, I counted eighteen offices, and sixty trips would be two meetings a day if all offices were used, because in plus out, you know, would put it in there. So, I don't know how they're going to run it or anything like that, but if you're saying two forty or two hundred plus was the original design consideration, and they're saying it's going to increase at sixty to eighty, doesn't sound like it's good news to that design consideration or formula.
I would say that the sixty to eighty is very concerned, but that is based on engineering, transportation engineering institute standard trip generation for a medical clinic and taking the square footage that they're devoting to that use and applying that and subtracting it away from hospice and making it attributable to Veridian.
Okay.
And again, what you're comparing is a full hospice with twelve beds and an office area with hospice personnel in it with the change. And one of the things that makes it difficult to compare is that you don't have a full hospice, and the activity level over there is very low, and we have a whole bunch of vacant lots that don't generate any traffic. So, that makes any increase in traffic seem dramatic.
Dean, real quick, just to kind of add on to that, too, as you go up the hill on Crawford, going further east, on the north side particularly, on the south side, I guess, too, there are a few other residential streets that spill out into Crawford.
Starlight Drive on the north side.
Starlight might be a good example. How do you think, and if you don't know, I mean, say you don't know, but how do you think the traffic generated from this change would compare to, say, a Starlight Drive, which is a simple two-lane road, non-signalized?
Well, what the planning commission was discussed was that except for a residential street that's right next to a school, a typical residential street in Salina carries from one hundred to three hundred cars per day, and Holly Lane carries almost no cars per day. And based on these projections, the planning commission, or at least a majority of them, concluded that the total trips would still fall within the one hundred to three hundred range. And so, on a street like Starlight or a typical residential street, where you assume that a single residence can generate up to ten trips per day, it would be in the one hundred to three hundred range.
So, you can look at it both with zoning and the presumed development, if the full residential, if the full area was developed residentially with its original zoning, or compare it to an existing neighborhood that currently spills out, and either way, you wouldn't expect the traffic volume generated to exceed the zoning or the actual demand.
It will certainly increase, it will noticeably increase, and the frequency of trips will increase, but if you look at the fact that the hospice in this facility is the only traffic generator, it's roughly equivalent to a fully built-out residential street like Starlight or even Victoria Heights. So, it's still within, they felt, within the tolerable limits of a residential street that you expect to have. And if we put traffic counters out there today, I don't think we're going to find very many vehicle trips per day.
And then just a matter of, quick question, the eight to eight, is the eight the last appointment, or is that when all staff has to be cleared off of the premises of the Veridian portion?
I, I mean, that's the time that the doors close.
Or no more clients in, no more clients let out.
Employees are leaving, and clients are leaving at eight o'clock, and nobody is there after. That's, you may want to hear from Mr. Henencamp on that since they agreed to that, but that's the way we would interpret it.
Okay. That's, oh, my question, sorry.
I would agree that of all the factual findings, the hardest thing that the planning commission had to come to agreement on was having something comparable on the trip generation and trips, just because there's, like, very little traffic on Holly Lane today, and anything is going to seem like a large increase.
Other questions?
Mr. Luckman's also available for any questions you might have of him.
I'd just like to have some idea on the barrier, and I guess Mr. Henencamp might be able to, if there is a barrier to be. My issue's always been with, not with Veridian being there, because I think that's, you know, something we need more, probably need more mental health folks, but just the idea of so many people standing around for appointments and visiting and talking and hospice there, and I just wondered if there was any sort of barrier between the two.
I'll let Mr. Henencamp speak to that. That did come up at the planning commission, that the, some planning commissioners thought that the presence of Veridian could be disturb the tranquility or quiet of the hospice area, and they were assured that there would be a solid barrier between the two, but Mr. Henencamp can confirm that for you.
I think they've got a question for you. You're up, yeah.
I'm ready for that question, yeah, please, and then we'll bring you back up for-
Did you want me to respond to questions only?
Just that, yeah, just that question, you bet, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Should I introduce myself first?
Please.
I'm Jack Henencamp. I'm representing Slade Regional Health Center on the issue of hospice and Veridian consolidation on Holly Lane. If we could have, I think, slide number seven, maybe? Okay, the location, I don't have a green above, green, green. The areas you see in green now essentially remain hospice, just as they are now, and that includes these storage areas here. The only thing that would be excluded, it would be these two right here, but these will continue as hospice storage areas. This will continue. Oh, okay, thank you. And this area will remain hospice, as it is now. This would be the inpatient hospice and support areas here, and they're conferencing, and this would be the outpatient office, outpatient offices at that location. As far as a barrier, there's a wall that exists here along this path here, and then there's a hall here, and we would create a lockable door at this location. And then this office, actually this one here that is not colored, would be part of Veridian services. So, the physical barrier is the existing walls, and then there's a door here right now that is not secured and locked, but would be to separate and identify the area. The entrances, the other separation, I think it was slide seventeen, John. What we'll have is this will be the primary entrance for Veridian, this will be the primary entrance for hospice. One thing that was pointed out, I think, at the city commission meeting as well as at the planning commission meeting, is these services are not incompatible. I mean, right now, they counsel hospice patients, Veridian counsels hospice patients because they need that and their families, so this is actually more compatible than incompatible. And there, of course, not every patient that goes to Veridian would be hospice-related, but there is a compatibility there for that. I don't know if that answers the questions, there were a couple of others. Mr. Jennings, you'd raised the issue of eighteen offices, but not all those offices are for counselors, there's support staff that will not be seeing patients, as well as we have staff that will be seeing patients, say, from twelve to eight, and persons that will be leaving at three or four, and then not all counselors are there at the same time. So, there is a diversity in that, and it's not eighteen counselors running twelve hours at a time. I think those were the two of the questions that were asked. I'd respond anymore.
Are there any other questions at this? Do you have an executive session for? Attorney-client, I'm going to make a motion that we move into the executive session for attorney-client privileges for a very short five minutes, which is probably excessive overkill for us to move on attorney-client matter. I'm trying to read it all, for the reason that, that's all right, they're not that bad. The public discussion of those matters would waive that privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matter. We convene here at four forty-seven.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? We are now in the executive session, we'll return in five minutes. We return from the executive session.
I move we recess in the executive session for ten more minutes to discuss the legal council matters subject to quasi-judicial determination for the reason that the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at five P.M.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move back into executive session for quasi-judicial deliberation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. We are back in the executive session, we'll return at five P.M.
I move we recess in the executive session for five more minutes for more quasi-judicial determination for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at five oh seven.
Second.
Motion in a second to move back into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? We'll return to executive session. Now, return from the executive session into general session.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, after deliberation, I find that this has an important public health matter, use provides for significant public benefit that outweighs any minor loss in value to surrounding properties. In request, we recommend, after recommendations of professional staff, page eleven, that we approve permit, looking at items, what is it, one and three on page eleven, after the planning commission's approval, and one, two, three, and five, as recommended on page twelve by staff, and bring this back in written form next week. Does that give enough time, is that?
I understand you have the commission's directive to be prepared a resolution writing formalizing the findings back to the conditions requested. Is that?
That's correct, yes.
And just to clarify, is that the commission's directive that you are adopting the, not only one and three of the planning commission's conditions, but are also adopting the final staff on page eleven as well as part of the findings?
Yes, I'm sorry, I left that off. Yes, I'm sorry, no, it was not clear, I left that off, I'm sorry. This next week, work, does that give enough time for all that? Okay, and then bring this back in written form, which is our date.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
April twenty-first, September twenty-fourth meeting? I think so.
This time we have a motion in a second to, we terminate our public deliberations of the matter upon closing.
Well, I think it's, you're moving to approve the permit pending resolution.
We need to hold this hearing open until the receipt of, okay. So, then we have that, the motion to accept the facts and findings of staff as noted on page eleven, and recognition that this is an important public health matter, provides a significant public benefit that outweighs the possible loss in value of surrounding properties. And if I understood, they're incorporating use items number one and three on page eleven as brought forward from the planning commission, as well as staff items noted on page twelve, and those were items number one, two, three, and five, and that this is to be brought back to the commission in resolution form at our meeting on September the twenty-fourth. All those in favor, the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. We end our deliberations on this matter, close in, and move on to administration.
Item eight point one, second reading, ordinance number twelve dash one zero six five eight, amending section eight dash two five four of the Salina Code by removing testing requirements for volatile organic compound, air testing, and placing specific requirements on mercury testing with certain drug sites.
Well, this ordinance, number twelve dash ten six five eight, was passed on first reading on September the tenth, and since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have any anybody that would like to speak on this matter, any comments at this point in time?
Wow.
So, I would bring it back to the commission for further deliberation and action.
May I move we up on second reading for ordinance number twelve dash one zero six five eight, amending section eight dash two five four of the Salina Code by removing testing requirements for volatile organic compound, air testing, and placing specific requirements on mercury testing with certain drug sites.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number twelve dash ten six five eight, with the clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. We have further administrative business, this is a request for the executive session.
I move to recess in the executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets.
Ten minutes. They changed.
Okay, so, ten minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation and reconvene at five twenty-three.
Second.
The motion in a second to recess in the executive session for matters of trade secrets, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Do we expect any action? Thank you.
No, we do not.
Okay, we are now in the executive session.